I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. Appreciate your patience. Joe, we have an exemplary person here tonight.
We do. We have student partners and their athletes in Unified Sports are celebrated every year at the Michaels Cup. In addition to a number of awards, athletes and partners are invited to participate in an essay-writing contest addressing the prompt, "What does Unified Sports mean to me?" This year, we're proud to announce that Jackie Hallows Michael Naughton was selected as the Michaels Cup essay contest winner. Congratulations, Mikey. We're going to ask Mikey, Michael, to come up. And also joining him are his coaches, Coach Don Casey, Coach Jennifer Fisher, and also his Unified Sports teammate, Coy Maitland. So come on up, Michael. Coy, come on up.
Congratulations. Good work. You don't want to cut your eye. Here, you get those other three. Thank you for all your help with this, too. Good work. Good work. We're looking there. Looking there.
Congratulations.
Hold on. Good night. All right. Thank you. Good work. Thank you.
And Coy was honored at the dinner as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. And Joe, we have some other thanks to do tonight, correct?
We do.
For our student board reps who are in place and ready to go.
Right there.
You want to have them come up? Or you want...
Sure.
So we'll have you come up. We have a little gift for you. And on behalf of the board, we want to thank all of you for your time and efforts and all of our updates and marvelous Mondays that we have all the time. So we thank you for all your work on the board and good luck.
Are all three...
No, we're missing one.
Chris, you're a junior, right?
Yeah.
Chris and Maria, you guys are coming back. Good. It's Giovanni Greschau at the West Virginia State Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, they're not coming up. You guys.
Thanks for serving.
Will you see them?
I'll see them tomorrow, I think.
You have a mission.
You can give them an empty envelope tomorrow.
See what's inside before you leave.
You've got a nice bow.
So the board, thank you very much. I do not see the senator here yet, so we're going to move on and we'll get to that.
Oh, here she is. Right here.
Wow. Perfect timing. Perfect timing. Senator, hello.
Hello.
We're actually just getting to you on this.
Nice intro.
Wonderful.
Do you need to take a break?
No, I'm sorry. We just got out of session, so I'd rather...
Well, yeah, have a seat. Come on up.
You know, we don't have on the agenda to report to the committees for the students to present.
I think, yeah, I think they're ready to... You guys are going to present tonight, right? You have plans? Yeah.
No, we do.
Do we have a minute?
Yeah, because I have my notes on a committee. It's just down, down a little bit, but...
It's on number eight.
So ladies and gentlemen, hi, Senator. Welcome.
Great.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate this. If you would like to take a few moments, the board is very interested in hearing how the session is going or went. And then we'll, I'm sure, we'll have some questions for you.
Great.
So if you'd like to give us a little briefing, we'd appreciate that. And congratulations on the election and your chairmanship of the committee, too.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Hi, everyone. So I'm Sue Jada Gadkar-Wilcox, the newest, one of the newest members of the Senate and new representative in Monroe and in Bridgeport and Trumbull. And I'm a faculty member at Quinnipiac University. I teach constitutional law and human rights law. So education is my background and my passion and my commitment. So anything you need from me in terms of advocacy from here on forward, of course, you know, just feel free to reach out. I know I've already spoken to parents and I care about parents, students, teachers, everything that relates to education. And so I'm chairing... I'm a little overwhelmed right now because I'm like new. It's three months and now we're in the middle of session. So I'm learning the process as I go along. And I'm also, I'm on eight committees, so I'm chairing three of them.
Wow.
So it's a lot. But one of the committees, and I'm happy to talk about this, is the work on special education. So I'm chairing the Special Education Committee. I'm a member of the Education Committee. And then I'm also Vice Chair of Higher Education. So you can see that that's a, you know, a thread that's important to me. I also have a background in law. So before teaching at Quinnipiac, I was first a litigator, but then the director of a nonprofit because I was always committed to public interest law. And so I have another thread of sort of legal committees, general law. I'm Vice Chair of Judiciary. There's another committee called Regulations Review, which doesn't sound that interesting that I'm chairing, but it's really important when it comes to separation of powers and having the legislative check over executive agencies. So any regulations that come through, Connecticut is one of the states, I think it's one of, it's basically leading in this model where you actually have legislative oversight of those executive regulations. Because usually the executive agencies are cast from, by statute, through the legislature to do something, and then they create regulations to sort of follow that, those statute parameters. But to make sure they don't go beyond those parameters, that's why it has to come back to Regulations Review as a legislative committee before it goes forward. So that's, that's what I'm doing. And then we have a very new committee, brand-new committee called Government Oversight. And in the same way, it's really to keep a check on what's happening with public dollars and auditing of our public agencies and in real time. So if something happens and there's like, let's say, scandal and we don't know what happened to money, we can actually now call that agency before us and have a public hearing so the public can know what's happening and that we can better account for that money. So that's one of the functions of government oversight. And I think that's it. And I'm on transportation. Those are all my committees, and I asked for that one. So, because I think that's important in terms of infrastructure. But a lot is happening right now. I can tell you what the process, for those who are not familiar, the way things work in the Connecticut Legislature is that everybody, everything goes through committee first. So we have, like I mentioned, the committees I'm on, you know, there's Commerce and Banking and, you know, any of the environment. So there are a number of other committees. And any bills that come through initially based on the topic go through those committees first. When they pass out of the committees, now we're at that process where everything that's likely to become law has passed out of those committees. And now we're at the point where it'll come through, if it was designated as a Senate bill out of that committee, it'll come to the Senate Chamber first. And if it was designated a House bill out of the committee, it'll come to the House Chamber. And then once those get voted through, so first I have to actually first get to the floor, once they get to the floor of those chambers and get voted through from those chambers, then they'll go to the other chamber. Once they get voted out of the other chamber, then they'll go to the governor, then it'll be signed, then it'll become law. So there's a, there's a lot, a lot more coming. And I can tell you particularly for special education, it's a lot of negotiation still and discussion around it. One of the things that came up with special education, in particular why we created this committee, is because we were, I would say, really kind of in a moment of crisis in terms of the spending for special education, which was outpacing the investment that was being made at the state level. But then also, we need to make sure, right, when, if we don't have that spending, it's impacting the schools that are, the students' needs are being met, which is our absolute fundamental priority. We have a constitutional obligation and a moral obligation to make sure we're meeting the needs of the students. So how do we make sure we meet the needs of the students but get a sense of why costs are rising so high when it's not true that the number of students is increasing that much? So why are costs rising so much? And it turns out, we don't have that much oversight over these special education costs. So that's one of the things we're working on. And I want, I wanted to make sure, I know, you know, initially, too, parents were worried that we were, we're looking at in-district placements, out-of-district placements. So sometimes for special education in particular, students are not able to have their needs met in an in-district program, so they're being placed out of district. There's transportation cost for that and there's, and then some of the out-of-district placements, the costs have been increasing. But to be clear, some of those out-of-placement districts are absolutely necessary because not all of student needs can be met in in-district placement. However, we heard from some districts that if we, if the district had more of a capacity to build an in-district program, then they probably would be able to serve more of those students. Not all of them, but they would be able to serve more of those students. And that would actually reduce the cost tremendously. And, and I should start with, it would be better for students because where students can be in their own district, that's always better for them. And, and their needs can be met. So we're trying to walk this very fine line of figuring out a balance. And I appreciate talking to parents who have given input. I've talked, I've spoken to advocates, members of boards of education, superintendents. So we've, we've spoken with everybody. And as you can imagine, there are so many different interests that go in here that it's, it's a huge bill. So the bill that came out of committee was 63 pages. It had a lot of concepts in it, including a study of rates, like how are rates being set right now from, from, from any provider? Because we just, one thing is, we need to know that. So the State Department has some of that data, but they haven't engaged with the data in a way that, anyway, that I have seen where we can do some kind of comprehensive analysis to say, you know, how many students are placed out of district? Why? You know, is it because their needs can't be met? Is it because the district just doesn't have the capacity to serve them now? So we need to start doing some of that analysis first, which is what we're, which is, I think, where we have to start. And then also, the next step would be to think about, okay, based on what students need, what is reasonable in terms of what rate? And again, not like a universal rate because it turns out that every student's needs can't be met by one service. You know, they might have different services that they need. The intensity of the service might be different. So there's a lot of kind of nuance that goes into, into thinking about how this gets set. So I, you know, I think what was really important is initially, we had a committee bill that had a very early deadline of implementation by like the end of this year, and we took that out right away. Because, especially for me, that was really important, that I didn't want communities and particular parents to feel like, oh, we're just rushing through a process. That's not going to help anybody. So we have to slow down the process, figure out what's a reasonable rate. We do have to look into it, though, and make sure we have oversight, make sure we understand what's being charged. Because right now, districts are negotiating, right, what, what those services ought to be, but they don't know what's being charged in the next district over, right? Somebody should have that data and have that oversight. So we're working on a kind of comprehensive bill about that. So that's, that's work in progress. That's still coming out. And now what you'll see is for the other, so maybe, maybe I'll stop there and see if there's any questions on it. There's a number of things coming out of session, too, so I don't want to, I'm already on information overload, so let me know where you want me to kind of let you know what's happening. But I'm happy to talk special ed or education or any of the other bills coming out.
I think just, you know, the reimbursement, we were, we were down 60%
Oh, yes.
At one point. So if you can chat about that a little, a little bit.
Yes, thank you. Right.
And burn approved, too.
Yeah, those are the...
A lot of times, I think we're spinning our wheels unless they do something about burn approved.
Right.
In Connecticut.
Yeah. So there are two, yeah, so, okay, well, so first with the, so we have, we have two ways that we support education at the state level for schools. One is the excess cost, one is the ECS formula, which is the Education Cost Sharing Formula. And that, every district gets a share based on a foundation grant and based on the number of students they have, the income in the town, right? There are fixed measures there and that's sort of to help share, share educational costs. Cities are more likely to get more funding from that, right? Because they have more needs in terms of their, of their districts. There's a second sort of fund that we use for education, which is called the Excess Cost Reimbursement, ECR. So there's ECS and ECR. Excess Cost Reimbursement is for special education. It's when school districts spend 4.5 times the per pupil, the average per pupil expenditure, they are then entitled from that dollar, from that point on, to be reimbursed for the money that they spent over the 4.5 times the per pupil expenditure. And so that formula is based on, so schools basically spend that amount and then they get reimbursed based on what's allocated. And that's where the problem was with the 60%. Because in theory, you should get 100% back, right? Because you spent, let's say you spent $100,000, you should get $100,000 back. But based on what's been allocated across the state, so this, this year, we allocated 181 million. That was the base formula. And that was more than had been allocated before. So that, that number has been increasing. But again, as I mentioned, spending has been outpacing that. So we increased that. But what happened was because the spending has been out, outpacing the investment, even though the investment has increased from the last couple of years, schools actually wound up receiving less than they did the year before. And so it dropped from, if it was like 65%, it went to 60%. If it was 72%, it went to like 68%, which was a significant hole in the budget, right? Particularly when you figure this out in the middle of the, in the middle of the budget cycle. So what we did this year was, in fact, this is my first bill, I called it on the floor and the governor signed, which is great, was we put back an emergency amount of $40 million because we heard from all the districts in particular to say, we're desperate. We are desperate. We, we're going to have to pass this off to the taxpayer. So please put some money back in. So we did an emergency funding, so emergency certification to put $40 million back in. And I think out of that, Monroe gets about 448,000, I think, right?
200.
200, I think, and Trumbull, sorry, that's Trumbull. So 200 and 225,000. So again, it's...
205.
Oh, 205. Okay, yeah, there's a, there's like a list and I don't have it in front of me. Thank you. Yeah, so it's based on, again, it's based on whatever percentage of that 40 million you would have gotten if it were in the original formula. So depending on the size of the town and how much you've already spent, so that's what you're getting back. So that, that goes back to the, to the, to the budget. So that we did initially. Now, the question going forward is, are we going to, are we going to have the 181 or is it going to include the 40 million? We've been pushing that it has to absolutely include the 40 million because towns can't be worse off than they were this year. And that's sort of our, that's sort of our bottom line. And that's what we've been advocating for. I should just say, it's a, it's a very difficult budget year, as you have heard and probably understand, where we don't know sort of the looming federal cuts that are coming. We don't know what they are, so the uncertainty makes it really difficult. Those, what, what organizations we're running on for up until this year, basically, is federal ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act. So that, that has ended. So now organizations are all coming to us saying, oh, well, I'm going to get the same amount again, right? But even though we have a surplus in the state, we don't have that much money to fill all of those gaps, especially with the federal cuts that we don't know how extensive they'll be. Today, in fact, we just went in to increase Medicaid rates because of, to respond to the Medicaid crisis. And so that's what we're doing, is like we're responding as we can and thinking about like how we use the budget. But one of the things we've been pushing for, especially in special education, is to say that towns should not be worse off because, you know, it was clearly, I mean, towns were desperate, desperately coming up. And, and I think that's why initially, we, we thought, in fact, that money might, was going to be vetoed. But I think in the week, over the weekend, the governor heard from so many people that we worked out, we worked out a way to get, to get that money. So that's really important. And I know he's, in fact, said specifically to me several times, I want to do something on special education. So in terms of support. So that's good. So that means we want to push for, to make sure that towns are fine on special education. Due process, I think we don't know enough about due, but one thing we're putting in the bill now is a, is a study on what the implications are of shifting, of shifting due process. Because there are, there are implications, and, and as a procedural person, I can say there are implications, too, on parents when you shift the due process language. So what is, what are those implications? And again, none of this has really, we, I haven't anyway seen a kind of comprehensive analysis of what is, what would that look like? What are the implications? What are any unintended consequences? So that's right now, sort of, the proposed language. Yeah.
Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you for analyzing all the costs.
Yeah.
That's going to be fair enough, which should have been done from the get-go.
Yes.
Because you did an unfunded mandate that was supposed to be 100% funded.
Right.
And it never has been.
It's never been funded, yeah.
So the burden's always come down to our taxpayers. The difference between cities and towns, I mean, I don't know what the city of Bridgeport has from a percentage. Jen, what's our percentage of students who need special ed?
19.
19%, right? I don't know what the city is, but I don't see how our need is any less than what the city is.
Yeah, no.
Right? So differentiating city versus town has got to be looked at greater because we are desperate, I mean, everybody has desperate time for funding, no doubt.
Right.
We're having a difficult time. Analyzing the cost, I don't know how long that's going to take. I hope it's quick.
Yeah.
Because the pain is real.
Yeah.
And, you know, as you've heard from everybody, you know, parents, teachers and staff, I mean, it's, it is, superintendents. It is real, and we're feeling the crunch now. We don't know how we're going to meet our needs. The other idea of moving it in is great if you have capacity.
Yeah.
We have zero capacity.
Yep.
And we can't even meet the current needs of students coming in now. So part of this, since you're on several committees, you know, we have like $3.8 million worth of transportation cost. So if you could bring that in, that'd be great.
Exactly.
But there has to be, in the United States, a toll, not just Connecticut, there has to be a rebuilding the school infrastructure statue of some sort. You know, the infrastructures of schools are diminishing. I mean, we've got very old schools and there's no way of funding the rebuilding of these at this present time. So the state feds are going to have to do something to help us out in this, this process because you can't, we live with steam heat and electric heating when electricity rates are going through the roof. So I don't know which committee of the many you're on.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you made a lot of good, yes. No, you made a lot of good points, and let me respond to, so you're absolutely right that, well, with the excess cost reimbursement, it doesn't distinguish between city and state. It's based on how much you're spending. And that's why you're getting back the percentage of what's being spent. And the cities are getting more because they have more students. And, and so they're, they're larger in terms of district size. Like Trumbull, too, like the original number I thought of was Trumbull because it's bigger. So it's just, it's based on what you're spending.
They'll take your money, it's fine. If you want to switch it up.
So, I don't know, I don't know what they would say about that. But...
Just stay probably, no, I'm okay.
But, so in that sense, you know, but, but you're right, it's never been fully funded. And in fact, it's been funded to the point where it's, you're just getting enough that districts are getting used to having 70% or 70, but it should actually even be higher than that. Now, the, I think your, your other point, but you're absolutely right that we need to invest in the in-district capacity. And that's where, because part of the significant cost in terms of out-of-district placement, one, I want to say, it shouldn't just be about the cost because we have to meet students where they are and meet their needs. But it's better for students who can be served in district to be in district. So I always want to start there because it's much better for students who can be served in the district. Now, only, only those who can be served in district. But, so part of what we're doing in this bill is in fact a grant program. It's also in the governor's budget. It's a grant program and a building incentives so you can get higher reimbursement rates for building programs that are related to special education, both for funding programs and then building costs for special education. So you're absolutely right.
The cap is on it? Or is it still in discussion?
Well, that's still in discussion, yeah. Yeah. The governor, the governor set aside, I think he said, like 14 million, I think it was, that he set aside for the building.
That would cover us.
Yeah. So, but I, but we're, but again, we're, that's, that's, yeah, that's all being negotiated.
Negotiated, okay.
And that, that process, I'm learning myself to as we're going forward. But, but you're absolutely right that we can't build the capacity when you're paying, right, for the transportation and you're already, and then you're waiting to be reimbursed. So part of what we're trying to do is to also see if we can shift some of that money up front. But certainly, that, that's one part. And the other part was to create, what you said, is we have to create capacity. There's, the only way to create capacity for districts is to give capital, so grant programs and then building incentives. So that's part of the bill.
Thanks.
Yeah. And again, work in progress. Some of this may, we need to keep advocating for it, but we're, we're like, we're going to see what we can get to now.
I don't think we need most schools across the country, the state, or have not been investing, because you have to invest in your taxpayers to be able to support the school system.
Absolutely.
And there's only so much they can do, you know, with still being able to support life.
Absolutely.
So, you know, every town, ours especially, is taking a hit. You know, we keep the taxes down so people can come here, but the hit has been on for 40 years plus, on the schools itself.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you for coming, Senator. So let's keep on infrastructure a minute. So our reimbursement rate, 36.7-ish, I'm guessing?
Yep.
Trumbull, okay, the town that you're familiar with, is putting up a brand-new school and they got 40...
40-something, yeah.
44%? So I guess what I'm asking for is a plate. As you know, we have an ad hoc committee now. So I'd like you to put on your hat and find out why Cheshire got for two schools 55%. I know it's two schools.
Yeah.
Trumbull, 42, I think she got, and we're at 36.7. So it's just, it's, it's nothing you can cure now. I just wanted to give you that little insight.
Yes.
I didn't mean to set you up.
No, no, no. And I think some of that might, because remember, it felt like we were sort of, we had, we had no problems in terms of budgetary constraints as where those ARPA dollars were being used.
Yes.
And, and I can tell you that some of that is repurposing, is the ARPA dollars being used.
Got you.
And, and so the problem is now, we're, we're seeing not, and not only are we seeing that crisis of the ARPA dollars ending, we're, we don't know what federal cuts are coming down. And the cuts that have already come down have been devastating. And that's why today, we had to go back, today, we were just in for one bill alone, which was to put back, well, the Medicaid reimbursement, plus it was any deficiencies in the, in the deficits and in, in the budgeting for the previous year. But exactly, so we have to think about all, but, but, yeah, anything I can, I will, happy to work with, with the board on any particular project that's coming up. You know, you can always reach out to me and I'm happy to advocate. And if there's anything I can do to help with bonding or with appropriations and, you know, that, I will put a letter, I'll advocate, but I'll happy to do that. Yeah.
Thank you. Chrissy, the audience?
No, I don't think so.
I didn't mean to set you up.
No, 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 and I think some of that might, because remember, it felt like we were sort of, we had, we had no problems in terms of budgetary constraints as where those ARPA dollars were being used. And, and I can tell you that some of that is repurposing, is the ARPA dollars being used. And, and so the problem is now, we're, we're seeing not, and not only are we seeing that crisis of the ARPA dollars ending, we're, we don't know what federal cuts are coming down. And the cuts that have already come down have been devastating. And that's why today we had to go back. Today, we were just in for one bill alone, which was to put back, well, the Medicaid reimbursement, plus it was any deficiencies in the, in the deficits and in the budgeting for the previous year. But exactly, so we have to think about all, but, yeah, anything I can, I will happy to work with, with the board on any particular project that's coming up. You know, you can always reach out to me and I'm happy to advocate. And if there's anything I can do to help with bonding or with appropriations and, you know, that, I will put a letter, I'll advocate, but I'll happy to do that, yeah.
Thank you. Chrissy, the audience?
No, I don't think so.
Joe?
Good to see you.
Jenny, you?
Yeah, just talking about, we're looking into creating a therapy day program in districts. That's what we really wanna bring kids back into district if possible. So the startup costs are quite large for us. So it really would be impactful to our budget. So I'm glad to hear that there are grants that are coming out and things like that. And I'm just, I know you probably can't answer this question right now, but is there some kind of formula that you guys are looking at? Something similar to excess cost for towns? Because we're a smaller town than others, obviously, you say Trumbull, like, double, we got. And I'm just curious as to if you guys have gotten that far yet.
Yeah, I don't think it's a formula. It'll, there'll definitely be a grant process. And so it'd probably be based on, on need and ability to serve the town. But it's, it's not gonna be like only cities that are serving more students. I, my, that's my understanding. But it will be a competitive grant process because it's not gonna be a grant that will be available to everyone. But I think that if you, so the towns that have things that are more, more ready to go, where you have an idea that's already worked out, or a building that's already scoped out, you know, I think that's, that's more likely to be something that then you can, you can like apply for the grant as soon as it comes out. Because I don't know that every town will be in that position. You know, like, because we just put this out. So the fact that you have something, that you're thinking about it. And I, I met earlier with the first selectman, I know there were some ideas about maybe other placements in, in towns as well, that, in Monroe, that might, that might serve or can be repurposed in a way to provide other special education services. So it's that kind of thing that I think you can apply for the grant. And as soon as I get information on it, I'm happy to share. And then again, happy to advocate for whatever support you need on the legislative side to make sure I put that support in as well.
Just one more thing too. So in regards to transportation, I think it's wonderful about the transportation grants because it's incredibly expensive, you know, to transport students out of district. My question is that, is there some language that you're gonna put into the bill? It's not just about the amount that we're spending on transportation. Also, there's a huge safety piece, the vetting and making sure that the companies that we utilize, you know, have the appropriate drivers and appropriate insurances and all those kinds of things. So that's definitely.
Oh, that's a good point.
I didn't see anything in the bill about that.
Yeah.
It's something I suggested.
Those transportation grants actually may not be going through though, because the Department of Transportation, you know, there's, we're also running up against constraints on how that money can be spent and how it's been earmarked. But the, so what we do have in there is, are the in-district incentives, which hopefully, as you're building capacity, will help reduce the transportation costs because you're able to bring students back in district. And so, but, but right now, we were looking to see if we can use special transportation funds, but that's, that is a bit on hold. So I don't know if we can use it for transportation. I think there will be a study though on transportation and including safety. But part of it was to see if it made sense to create, you know, a bus route that may accommodate, you know, more than one district. And would that help with cost savings? I'm not, again, it's so complicated, I'm not sure that it would, but that's why we, we need things like a study on that. But, and then, and then other factors like safety will be in that transportation study.
Thank you for your numbers.
Sure.
What are your studies, the cap, outplacement costs?
Capping?
Capping.
Yeah, we haven't talked, so I think, I think what's, instead of capping, I think what, what has been discussed is sort of trying to figure out first what's reasonable. And I think the problem is, it's hard to figure out what's reasonable. So you can't, you can't start with a cap or to say there's a limit, right. Right, and there's also an obligation that we have to meet students' needs. So, but, but, but there is also an obligation to make sure, for oversight. So to make sure that what's being charged of the districts is reasonable. Now, the districts negotiate those. So, so it's true that the districts are, do have a say in how those agreements are made. But the problem is, they don't know necessarily. They get locked into, so we should, as the state, have at least understand, like, are you, is Monroe being the same, charged the same thing as Trumbull? Is Monroe being charged the same as Bridgeport? And is it based per student? So we don't, but, and maybe, maybe everything is, we just don't know because we don't have that, we don't have the data. So part of it is like, let's have some assessment. Yeah, an analysis of the data that we already have, which is collected by the State Department, but hasn't, we need to first engage with that data. So that's the oversight piece. So I, I don't wanna, you know, that's why, you know, initially at the, for the public hearing and then also for the committee meeting, I think there were a lot of parents that were alarmed because they thought, oh, you're gonna set rates really low and we're gonna close programs. And that's not the intention at all, because we have to make sure that students have those needs. Not everybody can be served in district. But this is not sustainable, you know, the cost that.
Exactly.
And, and we don't, and again, we have to have oversight because why are the costs going up so much mid-year when there's an 11% increase, for example? And what, and maybe it's justified, but we don't, again, if we can't say why it's justified, then we have an oversight problem for state dollars. So we have to have that.
I think with most things coming out of Hartford, at least, you know, the intention is good, right? We're gonna give you one to start, but it's the ongoing cost that they fail to look at.
Yeah, right.
What's the ripple effect, five, 10 years down the road or on the annual budget?
Exactly.
When you're doing it, when you're, look deep, if you can imagine the details. You just, you know, let's get a better perspective on long-term, long-term costs.
Absolutely. No, thank you, that's a really good point. And that's why we don't wanna rush the process, because you're absolutely right. We don't wanna set something where five years from now, 10 years from now, we're like, oh no. Now we have to come back to the table and think about something else, so.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea of what possibly might happen with the federal money? I mean, is there any indication yet or we just kinda waiting?
You mean the federal, the federal budget?
Yeah, the money, the.
You mean IDEA funds?
No, like all the, like the grant money.
Right, so IDEA title one, yeah.
We, it's, I mean, it's, it feels so uncertain every day and also I'm new to the whole process. So it's, it's, it's a very strange place to be because it feels very unprecedented, that even what, what we had said is, even as we set this budget for the legislature, which will be by June 5th, we're definitely gonna be coming back in session. That's my understanding, a few times, I think, because we may have to adjust based on what the federal budget is and what these cuts are. Because they're really devastating. I mean, they're, especially to education. And so we don't, but we don't know, because we don't know, some of them are still being litigated, some of them are on hold, some of them are frozen. But then, I think, even the ones that are frozen or not frozen, the states worry that if we start using that money and then the litigation doesn't go in, you know, in favor of the state, you have to pay all that money back. So it's, it's, everything is kind of like in limbo as to like where we need to, where we need to invest. And so it's, it's, it's a final, it's, it's a sort of strange situation to say this is the final budget. But it's clear that there have been understandings that any time like, like today where there has to be an emergency certification and really thinking about, you know, looking at the rules in a different way, like the fiscal guardrails and the constraints that we have, to say we need to address this emergency situation. We're gonna have to do that whenever we need to. And so we may come back in session. My understanding is that we will for certain come back in session more times than usual in the fall to adjust any, to make any adjustments. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator, the president of our SEPTA Parents Organization is here, Maria. So I'd like to offer her the opportunity. I know she had a few parents submit some questions. So if, Marie, if you wanna pick some of the more urgent ones, go ahead.
I'll ask you two questions and I'll email you the rest.
Great, great. Oh, good, because I do have a caucus meeting now after, I'm like, I have to run to meetings.
One of my questions is, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, that the extra grants that will be given to the districts to create these in-district programs would have to be housed in the same building of general education classrooms?
Um, it would be the same. I don't remember if that was the restriction for all of the grants and maybe not in the governor's budget, but that, that's part of, I mean, we want it to be in the. In the building, yeah, we want it to be in the same, because, because we want to meet that least restrictive environment mandate as well. So to the extent possible, I mean, it has to be for special education purposes, the, for the grant money to be used.
So like self-contained classrooms, co-talk classrooms, things like that?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll double check that in the bill and that, but again, we're still negotiating that language, yeah.
And then this is from a parent. When it comes to in-district incentivized programs, what steps will be taken to ensure that district placement recommendations are based on a child's unique needs rather than budget considerations?
Yeah, that's a really important. So one thing to have parents be reassured is that even when it comes to bringing children back into the district, it's all based on the IEP, which is already individualized. And parents are at the table and the districts are at the table. So nothing can be done in terms of creating a program or bringing students back to a program that doesn't meet the IEP. So I would, the IEP still dictates the needs of the student, because of course, that's primary. We just, I mean, we just realistically also have to think about the sustainability of how much we're spending, especially if we don't know if it's not being spent properly. You know, not that I'm saying there's any fraud or anything, I'm just saying, like, we don't know if there's some excess charges that maybe are not reasonable and we should be thinking about saying, okay, well, why are we, you know, why is this the cost for that service? Because again, we just need that oversight. But it's not too, and so, and because that IEP is in place, I don't think parents should be worried that, oh, now, now all of a sudden, my student's gonna come back. My child is gonna come back and the school's not gonna be able to meet their needs, because then it won't meet the IEP. Yeah. And I'm happy to answer, you know, any other questions from.
I'll, I'll email you the rest of the questions.
Yeah, right, you can reach her, yeah, sure.
Does anybody else from the audience? I have a break in protocol here, but I do wanna take advantage of having a state senator here, if you have another minute. Does anyone else have any quick questions for the senator while she's here? No, you're getting off the hook easy, so.
I know, it was like.
On behalf of all of us, thank you very much. Appreciate the information and good luck up there. We appreciate you fighting for us.
Thank you.
Truly, and we'll be in touch. Yeah, we'd love to hear at the end of the session too, so.
Absolutely.
We'll be in touch.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you know how to reach me and.
Yeah.
Please feel free to share my information. There's a lot of people here know how to reach me directly, because I, I do really do wanna be available and accessible and to make sure that, you know, especially for education. So anything that I can do to help for education is just, just keep in mind the budget. You know, one, to keep in mind that I'm, I'm new and doing what I can to push my voice, but also we're facing these budgetary constraints. So whatever we can do, but whatever I can do to push for education and to support students, you know, and teachers, that's what, that's what.
Thank you, yeah, we'll let you get to your next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Did you give her your credit card?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look in the details. I love it, magnify it.
Thank you for representing Monroe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, everyone, all right.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you all, I'm gonna head to my next meeting, otherwise I would've stayed a little bit longer.
It's okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, and nice to see you all.
Love to see you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move on to public participations. Students, you can stay there for a second. Anyone here for public participation? No signups, okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board, any questions on the minutes in our packet? Hearing none. Any questions on the warrants? No? Everybody looks at Dennis, that's funny. Budget transfers? Straightforward? Great, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by? Chrissy? Any further discussion? No, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We're now gonna move on to the reports of the committees and thank you for your patience. Students, go right ahead.
Good evening, I hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. I'm so glad to be done with AP tests, but in recent nights, I found myself facing a new problem completely different than studying. My capstone presentation is 15 minutes long instead of 12, and I don't know how to cut it down at all. This frenzy is shared among all seniors presenting their capstone projects, varying from woodworking to beekeeping to accounting, or in my case, to natural medicine, this Thursday after school. The afternoon will be long, but we'll have the company of juniors like Chris and Ria, who'll be watching several seniors' presentations as a learning experience for their own. Good luck to all presenting seniors. However, when capstone's in the rearview mirror, seniors finally reach the best part of the year. The senior trip to Six Flags, senior awards night, and the senior banquet are all in the next two weeks. After this, it seems that graduation is sooner than we think, where junior Olivia Kusel will serve as the grand marshal of this year's ceremony. Congratulations to Olivia.
This week, this week, Massach sent home letters to the top underclassmen. Each year, students.
Did you just turn the volume up?
Go ahead, did you hit mute?
Is the red light on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you see it?
Sorry. Okay, I'll start over. This week, Massach sent home letters to the top underclassmen. Each year, students in 9th, 10th, and 11th grade are given an award in either math, science, history, English, world language, tech, business, or the arts. These awards are given to students who have showed academic excellence, commitment, and a passion for their subject. 13 juniors also received book awards from top universities across the nation for their excellence across numerous subjects. On a more exciting note, Massach's annual spring fling is coming up. At this event, the senior girls will compete in their powerpuff game. We will also have a dunk tank, a bunch of food, and Massach's very own haze, which is our rookie boy band. Hopefully, I see Mr. Swenson out on that kickball field because the juniors will be returning for a teacher versus student beatdown.
As we close out the school year, students are busy preparing for their final projects, studying for their final exams. And if you're an AP student, anxiously waiting July 7th when test scores become available. Last Friday, closed out two weeks of AP tests here at Massach, and many of us are feeling the relief of being free from our AP classes, only to focus on our upcoming finals. Also, today marked the announcements of the 2025-2026 student gov elections. And we're pleased to announce that Ria and myself will be joining you all again next year as your senior board of representatives. And for our sports report, in baseball, they have recent wins against Newtown, Bonnell, and Weston, and they have an upcoming game against Immaculate tonight. In softball, they have recent wins against Bonnell, North Branford, Weston, and Joel Barlow. They have upcoming games against Immaculate, Amity, and Waterford later this week. In boys lacrosse, they have a recent win against Immaculate and lost against Joel Barlow in New Fairfield. They have upcoming games against Barlow tonight and Foreign later this week. And in girls lacrosse, they have recent wins against Joel Barlow and Fairfield, blah blah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shorten from 15 to 12, just cut out the Latin words.
Thank you. I wanna let the board know that the Health and Safety Committee met on May 15th. There was a, as I'm sure you saw from the Monroe Sun, the BOE participated with the town emergency services and did a phenomenal mass casualty drill. I wanna thank the town for emergency services and everyone involved in that, and our own parents and students for helping out. It was very realistic, everyone learned a lot. And I encouraged everyone to do that once a year with another very realistic scenario. They didn't go crazy. So I wanna thank everybody for that and it was a great job by, by everyone. Police, fire, EMS, cert, fire marshal's office, I mean, just, it's just everybody. So, so thank you for that. Also, there are some state law changes to drill requirements. There were some last year as well, so the state is looking to balance those out as far as lockdown drills or fire drills and all that. And the committee is discussing setting our own minimum standards to make sure that we stay above that and that the students and staff are gonna be competent on those drills, God forbid they're ever needed. So that was health and safety. Any board members have any committee reports? No? Okay, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent, Joe.
Thanks, first thing is for Ron, if anyone has any questions about the April fund activity statement?
Any questions for Ron? No? Okay.
And just, all I have is a really quick, you know, budget update, obviously. We are two weeks removed from our last meeting, but the day after our last meeting was the referendum. I just wanna thank the community for coming out to support the budget two weeks ago. We knew this was gonna be an especially difficult year, especially with revaluation going on. It was, you know, a little bit more optimistic to see the turnout was higher than it was last year. We had about 1,000 more people came out this year than last year. You saw the margins, it was very, very tight. 63 votes that it passed by. And, you know, while the turnout was higher, we're still at a point with 16 and a half percent of the, of the eligible voters coming out to vote. So, yeah, up from last year, where it was less than 10%, it was about 9 and a half percent last year, so 16 and a half percent. Hopefully, we're trending in the right direction. We definitely wanna explore ways to get the word out. I know, you know, I attend a number of the town meetings, Dave and I go to the PTOs, but there's gotta be a better way to get, get the word out. And I'm open to any ideas and suggestions that we have moving forward to, you know, try to get those numbers even higher. Finally, I know Ron, myself, Sheila, Jen, Mike, Marissa will be sitting down in the coming days to look at the 2025-26 budget. We have to account for the adjustments that were made to the budget and, you know, we're gonna prepare the budget for your approval for June, the June 2nd meeting.
Okay.
What was the total adjustment number?
1.85, then we, then it was a return of 783.
Minus the electricity?
Yeah.
Well, that included, that included the electricity.
So 618, 614? 617?
617, came back to the original budget.
Any questions for Joe? Nope, okay.
Good luck.
We'll, we'll move on to unfinished business. Number A curriculum, the college algebra in context with applications for the managerial life and social sciences. It's up for second review. We had a nice presentation last time. Any questions from the board on that? No? Can I have a motion to approve the college algebra in context with applications for the managerial, managerial life and social sciences as presented at our last meeting? Dennis?
I stated.
Second? Chrissy?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a point on this?
Absolutely, I was just gonna say, is there any discussion, so go ahead.
Well, I was not here, though, I read everything, so I'd assume I could vote on it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to number B, policies, second review, with a vote anticipated. Do any board members have any questions on the policies numbers one through five, which are up for tonight? They were pretty straightforward, right? Okay, can I have a motion to approve policies 4112.61, 4242.6 with forms one through six? One correction, 4118.22, 4218.22, 6142.101, and 3542.31 as presented at our last meeting? Have a motion? Alan, seconded by Jerry? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to new business for the approval of the 25-26 rates and fees, schedule tuition fees and facility use fees. Joe, you have those?
I do, yeah. If you, if you look at the link there, you'll see the, the new fees. The first one is the rates and, I'm sorry, yeah, rates and fees. The increase, we worked with our counterparts at Witsen's to come up with lunch prices for next year. And we kinda compared that to some of our neighboring districts as well to make sure that we're in line with where they are. So you'll see those, those fees, the 20 percent, 20 cents increase at the elementary schools for lunch, 15 cents for daily lunch and deli sandwiches at the middle school, and a 25 cent increase for the daily lunch at the, at the high school. I think the important thing, if I remember correctly, chicken tenders and fries are staying the same. So, that's the big, that's the big selling point.
Big sell item.
Yeah. In terms of tuition, it's very rare that we have tuitions, but it does happen from time to time. We did increase the tuition rate to more accurately reflect, it's not exactly the per pupil expenditure number, but it's, it's pretty close to it. I think per pupil, right now, Jen, is 18, 629. We increased tuition from 18,000 to 18,500, so it does reflect that. That also changed the, the rates for special education programs, because it's based, it's a, it's a calculation based off that. So if a student with special educations were to be tuitioned in, we have those rates to reflect that. And I believe the facility fees all remain the same. We looked at, the big one that we looked at was custodial charges, ensuring that our custodial charges were still in line to cover when an outside organization uses the facilities.
The minimums, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Joe?
This is a discussion point. Can we hold off on this until after we come up with how we're gonna to meet the budget in this? You know, the gap in funding that we have, maybe that has some impact on these. Not that I say it will, it's up to you to kind of come up with a plan, but I'd hold off on any decisions until we know what that game plan is, in my opinion.
Would we, well.
We could vote on this at the next meeting and that's when we're gonna bring the budget to.
My question is of what you talk about lunch plans and tuition, that type of stuff.
Lunches, well, quick lunches, yeah.
Right, that's my point, yeah. So, and when do you have to get this out by?
I mean, they, they need to be in place for next school year.
Yeah, so it's usually, this is usually voted on at the, it's usually voted on at the June, the June meeting.
I'm gonna have to sell a lot of chicken nuggets to make up the difference.
We wouldn't be able to use that money to offset the budget anyway, so.
Yeah, Dennis, I mean, you know, we're looking at a 1.233 million dollar, you know, minus, so I don't.
I know it's not going to leak it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if there's anything, I mean, facility fee, I mean, none of that goes towards our budget? Is that what you're saying?
It could, would go like facility, the facilities would go towards.
Goes into the revenue line item, not operating.
See, yeah, but not revenue. The custodial fees do net against the, the budget.
Right, so.
That's more of a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement, it, it, it knocks, it nets against the expenditure.